Ok, thank you sir. Play something, play something from there then. I'll prepare something else too. Before you're done, I'll prepare something else.
N'abè di boylen. N'abè di gini? N'abè di boylen. Owevene magnisi? Mba. Mba? N'ema obama. N'ema obama kena surognigi nisigubon. Uzu, anyaga wina kontrolani how. Ma yonkibewa, aduwe tikuwa, ma yonkibewa na poli, allu polisa ta ta ta, kanditwa obone. Biafra na boye boye.
What do vibes? Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Go to hell, tell Elisa we no give up. Put Jale for call, tell and say we conquer. In our destiny, we born to save Africa. Freedom and restoration. You know get mine come out, but all you collect, wo du, wo du, wo du. A pressure, fight on, dance, he no stop us. And make kill us, he no stop us. Tini bu hunger, he no reach us. Them kidnapping and betraying, and stealing for us. Eya, hoya, everywhere from Nigeria down Rocket. Hoya, hoya, we put the struggle autopilot. Nigerians, they complain, eh, they hunger too much, eh, they suffer too much. But my people, Galan, tell Galan, billion thanks to Timo Ju. Nam de Galo, Simon Eka. All in Africa. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Gaffre well and dependancy. Freedom to Africa, yeah. Fight fight to Nigeria. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. That's my saying, is a man said the struggles have both us. Said the struggles to eastern governments. Rest in peace to all our Galan soldiers with them fall. Respect to all our fallen heroes with them fight. Despite all the realization, deliberation, tribulation. We still stand our one nation. United Nations, job it in ammunition, ISIS and Arabic nations. We still sing a freedom song. Hoya, hoya, everywhere from Nigeria down Rocket. Hoya, hoya, we put the struggle autopilot. Nigerians, they complain, eh, they hunger too much, eh, they suffer too much. But my people, Galan, tell Galan, billion thanks to Timo Ju. Nam de Galo, Simon Eka. All in Africa. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Gaffre well and dependancy. Freedom to Africa, yeah. Fight fight to Nigeria. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Keep in focus. Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Keep in focus. Na mehe o, onyo wa yibè. Mehe, mehe, onu zonke Biafra. Na mehe o, onyo onu we rupo. Mehe, mehe, onu zonke Biafra. Na mehe o, onu zonke Biafra. Mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Na mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Tell me what we do, everybody want to kill us. They want to take what belong to us. We de love our neighbor, so we de love ourself too. So it is written in the holy book. Enun na leno, omolo nyai tju kwa no. If I natural no, no, mwe lo wa ni. Na mehe rani. Biko biko koto, onyo no we lomo no. Na mehe rani no, onyo no we lomo no. Onyo yo yo. Chukwa kikele, anina bo gi. Yab 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 nyela nyango. The time is now, we want to go. Remember your promises. Na mehe o, onu zonke Biafra. Mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Na mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Mehe rani, onu zonke Biafra. Ndiro marani buru buru, tanachi we pundo anyinike. Shata. De ya hodi na wali, Mazinamdekan. Now is Prime Minister, Mazin Simonim. We shall rise and defend our land. The land of rising sun is our hope. Na mehe, mehe rani, yena yonki. Biko, mehe, mehe rani, onyo no we rupo. Mehe, mehe rani. Mehe o, mehe rani. Biko toto, papa biko mehe rani. Anina yonki biko no. Si te ndemo zeki kamehe, iwele. What do vibes? Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Go to hell, tell Elisa we no give up. Put Jale for call, tell and say we conquer. In our destiny, we born to save Africa. Freedom and restoration. You know get mine come out, but all you collect, wo du, wo du, wo du. A pressure, fight on, dance, he no stop us. And make kill us, he no stop us. Tini bu hunger, he no reach us. Them kidnapping and betraying, and stealing for us. Eya, hoya, everywhere from Nigeria down Rocket. We put the struggle autopilot. Nigerians, they complain, eh, they hunger too much, eh, they suffer too much. But my people, Galan, tell Galan, billion thanks to Timo Ju. Nam de Galo, Simon Eka. All in Africa. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Gaffre well and dependancy. Freedom to Africa, yeah. Fight fight to Nigeria. Amen, Alleluia. That's my saying, is a man said the struggles have both us. Said the struggles to eastern governments. Rest in peace to all our Galan soldiers with them fall. Respect to all our fallen heroes with them fight. Despite all the realization, deliberation, tribulation. We still stand our one nation. United Nations, job it in ammunition, ISIS and Arabic nations. We still sing a freedom song. Everywhere from Nigeria down Rocket. We put the struggle autopilot. Nigerians, they complain, eh, they hunger too much, eh, they suffer too much. But my people, Galan, tell Galan, billion thanks to Timo Ju. Nam de Galo, Simon Eka. All in Africa. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Gaffre well and dependancy. Freedom to Africa, yeah. Fight fight to Nigeria. Amen, Alleluia. Amen, Alleluia. Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Keep in focus. Struggle autopilot, until they come out. Simon and the pilot. Keep in focus.
Those who are asking, did you say Biafra will come to 2023? Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happen, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic Government in exile, under the leadership of Simon Eka. What we have achieved in 2023 and ask yourself that question again. And you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in exile in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland, where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra Charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created 40 states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria State in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engaged Nigeria terrorist army and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those ones I've not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Eka that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? Biafra declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra urban development project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria, benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria, openly called for persecution, execution and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Eka because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire life. In 2023, they call for the arrest of Simon Eka and call for the release of Mazinamdekan, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinamdekanu, they have come to say Mazinamdekanu is a saint. He's a very gentleman. He's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinamdekanu was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Ahne Zenibu and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadly than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Eka take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinamdekanu the most sensible person. These are hypocrite, these are devilish people, these are criminals, that only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad that name to Mazinamdekanu. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinamdekanu. The same people today, they have seen that. Yes, indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinamdekanu and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. So ba ka iluewa, obuha no de. When we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinamdekanu in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria. All of them today has come to say that Mazinamdekanu is very sensible. Now it is Simon Eka is the problem. These people who are just evil from birth refuse to understand why Simon Eka have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic state agenda. They found themselves in a hole. They tagged us, thought, in a circle because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny state, called it five eastern state. And they say, let us continue to divide them. And now they tell you, oh, you are talking about Biafra. You are just five state in the circle. We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of Islamic state has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the 40 state, which is called the United States of Biafra. Forty complete state, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in 1967 to 1970. I have come to learn what Uwazirike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement. And I have come to learn what Mazinamdekanu did right and was in the process of doing before they planned a kidnapping him. I continue from there and today, we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is infight in the Biafra government. They will say, oh, their hope now is that they are fighting. And they are hoping that there is infight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that like we said, there are costs. There are costs and they can never rise again. Biafra government in exile is a government that nobody born of a woman marching on this planet, using your foot to walk on the ground, will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored in 2023. We have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that meant Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the exile and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the 40 states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and the district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police. Every state will be independent. It is going to be local police and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military. It's one military that will protect the territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking, when are you going to declare Biafra? We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government and one day you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then we must capture every cranny of the Biafra territory.
Oke mna niwe uwa. Oke mna niwe uwa. Awale wa me tijee, Babi Biafra. Anozimna Biafra uwa o. Simon ipan joko. Oke mwa. Oke mwa. Oke mwa, monja zo, gana sopurugi. Oke mwa. Oke mwa, Simon e. Oke mwa, monja zo, gana sopuriri regi o. Oke mwa. Oke mwa, edidha jiri heni ile. Oke mwa, moni le, awa. Oke mwa. Oke mwa. Kamwagi, kamwagi. Kama nemretaya, 2014. But ada maruki dana goona Biafra. Ada maruki de, we are in Biafra. Ani nona Biafra. N'denile gine hana wore. N'denile, nona me heni ile akembe. Agaramre aputala, kembekembekama hua de honem. Munanne mano vidana California, me buru alolo. Ya gawa gafuru, okike ya, maloha che, nafoa. Oke madu. Be wemoku. Atokwa namka. Kamama, atokmke manani bu chineke. You are good, you are. Do you understand that? You are good and the other girls you work with. I did not, I don't expect anything in life. I deal with whatever I see as I see it. I didn't think, I didn't put it into perspective, into any type of perspective, seeing today and that I am seeing today, I'm experiencing today, osuwarum. I, I am content. My, my, oh my goodness, my Prime Minister, there is no name on the earth that fits you. There is no name. Chineka brakwala no we de hau. Njoko, njoko. Onyapana aga close to joko ya fakuibitiaka. Njoko!
Thank you, thank you, it's alright, I continue from there and then... One, uh, Monday, we are, you know, we are here now, we are on the Zoom. You know, I just played a very powerful video. We are on the Zoom now, let's go. Wow. Njoko, njoko. Hey! Chineka merayebere. Agawa haliloko. Hey! Okay, the knife, y'all. Okay, we are here, we need to...
Alright, thank you.
Hail to Biafra consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our privilege. The weapons stand, the rich and poor. the weapons done that reach and more than the free shall always be a part of liberty we shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal and through the crucible unscathed we'll pass when we are poised the wounds of battle to heal we shall remember those who died in mass then shall our throne let fill the glorious song oh victory we scour oh mighty rock oh god protect us from the hill before guide all our movements lest we go astray give us the strength to lift the human is form to give and not to come the costly chain let's go to rule to suffer with resolution to make this climb a land of righteousness
All hail Biafra land of the rising sun we love and cherish we have vanquished our enemies all hail Biafra god bless Biafra in him we trust shout it, sing it, all hail Biafra god bless Biafra we have emerged triumphant from all our foes through the crucible unscathed we passed victorious our trumpets pealing the glorious song play it, sing it, all hail Biafra all hail Biafra we shall always remember all that perished in the struggle for our freedom all hail our heroes our prayer shall be born both day and night say them always, all hail Biafra all hail Biafra now our star shines everywhere we crave humility god guide and protect us all all hail your wisdom shielding us from glory unleashed by our light and might Biafra, Biafra shining forever
Thank you. Moderator, over to you as you call on the next item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Am I coming out loud and clear?
There were, there were, there were, we can hear you right on, please.
Alright. Alright, sir. Next on our list here is an opening prayer by our own person, Honorable Abigail.
Thank you. Greetings, everyone. Merry Easter to you, um, at eight P M. Merry Easter to you, Prime Minister. Merry Easter to you, Onyendu, wherever you are. Merry Easter. Happy Easter to you, our Ebu Minister of Information and every umu wore nini ne no yammanu kenandangani ndin do nandembo Happy Easter. What we are celebrating today in commemoration of the resurrection of Christ is what is playing out on this journey today. And it happened to be symbolic to today's, uh, mission and to this purpose. Nothing is different. From the death of Christ to his resurrection, a lot of things was symbolic. There must be a leader who is going to spearhead the journey to freedom. There must be followers who are disciples as we are here today. There must be traitors, which we saw. And there was a resurrection, which means we shall rise. And today we are called to rise for Christ's reason and we must rise. Amidst the ashes, we must rise. And amidst betrayer, we shall rise. And today we are here welcoming everyone to Oweri State. Visually, you are all welcome. Today, oh Lord, we are going to speak in the language of heaven as our Onyendu told us. We are going to ask God for a special blessing upon this journey. Um, we are in a mood of prayer. Esu nyewa ina tineka ina inke pri kime heni ne Oni keni ne de no bakaya Onyendu Oni na hucha inhe ne kenu nihe na kwa tichare Aebu mungabakola nirugi nobochinketa Jehovah Ebiama oninyegho Kaige dewe padho injema Ebasranwono wenki imi bo Umo Biafra, umo ginde bo Ndeke gibu Jehovah anhono nanya Akwa nihe izirizi Nahe bakoro Nirugi Jehovah si we ne aychiro inirugi segi Jehovah ebano yena inobochinketa Ndeka ena amalite Anye wore lumenina inine bundeke gibu Jehovah padho ro No gehedu bua idjuwe injema wore na feginaka Lo Onyendu anye bo ma zinamdeka lebendino dhware ya Jehovah Setiakan sogi nebono Lo rugi woke bu Prime Minister in Simon eku nyenke na na Finlando tuaka hoka ndiro dhoko re Onyewa ina segi setiaka nebono Onyewa ina Jehovah lekwa ndiozo Ndeke muro we tu fundo ha Na injema muro wewa kaeni pokwe inkae kuprabako nobochinketa Idjuwe bukoto wanyono tokatwege inkae gejuwe na akadoya Onyewa isetiakan sogi neba ha nona inke di ndwe baby Awakwa nobochinketaka anye wemeli sina Jehovah Ebe liwo Esu nyewa ebe angwo engwe hiki di dianili Jehovah angwo engwe hike Wewa yobla ndino gema anya kapatu anya nanjema ayinaga Ayinini gebe li Ika bapa takwara nyindisi anya bundeka ra nyepureginaka Lekwa oni na nochi tanya ha ibu ma zo genkere E P E ma Yawa kaenari yepo ginaka nona inke di ndwe baby Nihe na ayma na ege muniro Onyendu no nisi Ndeka oparagi Yesu Christi juwe gusia anya Onyewa in Jehovah no yekwa ria nanjema kona palite Epekula kinyere ma yepo kula kinyere me yepo kula koda mbachi neke nabi ko Aewe na yo gi nobochinketa we na juwe na si Na agbagana ege bulia ege welya anya ni abu onine lunugu nini We na yo gi na solebi nya kaenge si biya Jehovah nihe na ebu mungatala Umo Biafra talaa umo Jehovah Ayma niya kaenge snepa gibu Jehovah biyo nyekere libe no wa Onyeme wore libe no wa Nyakaenge serena kage webiya abane Atoma tu nini inke ndiro ne tichane anyine Na nzube ha nini ne Jehovah Ayma rene gi nena anyaka Yekula ke we zuka kwa nokwa inono da ni Ono da ni ubua Jehovah efu onu kwa ono da ni de ma epe srike na ege muniro wani Aege muniro wani ka bapa tarera inono da inonimi Ono da inonime Jehovah nobochinketa jobulu wewa Ma ema nepe Jehovah na denho meri ga bururi inkani Onyene debani Ya tlo rura Jehovah ideha torura Ideha roha kwa nora Gibu Jehovah na husi heni ne inkani ma nihe ne inkani momo gihe ne inkani ma ini bua nyeko obote Ama nigaha abankiti ruwwe baby La anya Jehovah me rani berile dha anya mbapa ta ni nono da inonimi Ni kaesi we na bakwamba ka ebe bukoto wanyono we na atua atoma tu inkenya anime We na atukege inkenya anime na atu erodi tichinkenya anime Tineke nabi ko yekwa ria anyaka nihe na Anye chibilirugi ido anye nebe no Gibo nyene deb Israel ge debu mo Biafra Igwe doba uzuto Otu anine otu anire juwe baka agi ge debani Jehovah bu onyendu na yank Jehovah bu ndonriya inaka riya ni Osu na anyawaga he tibo anye ni umo Biafra Osu na waga hunku ni tibo anye na abale umu ibo No mo Biafra nini Jehovah skura anye kwa na anyawaga achabu anye Owaga hoka ni tibo anye Abane umo ono dojo nini inka inonimi Osu na ya gani zia ni heka ege si we na aga Na ogese kwa anyozo inkae gaso gidukwa anime Jehovah ge debani ka inha jobula harida kwasani otuwa Jehovah Ki ge deba kwa anye debu Nde Osuara nde inke libe ke gibu Jehovah zutarani Umo nani no ma kani ndeke noni muha we ne chikoba da ni Ayenahboha ni Biafra Liberation Army Epekula ka inha jobula dakwa siha tineke Epekula ka inha jobula dakwa siha mazinamdeka lo mobu Prime Minister Mobu E P E ma Mobu otu ni ma ndikaesi weka kharan debakoro neba Nakahara bunde na atua atoma tu nantu nini Ine anime Jehovah Idjuwe hona wero wederi umo Biafra Isinige deba burobiya in deba burobiya inwe ri siki Jehovah ge deba opo kwa inini na mbata ndikaesi we na apo Na apata We ne webe takwa anyu bi Jehovah agenheke opo opo kwa anye Nukute mobu Akapwa anye nantu mobu kwa no bu Slush na ge deba opo kwa inini na mbata ni Tibuwa we ruwwe baby Amen. Esu nyewa ina tineke Otu na sopro gaderera han sogi nihe na Osu nono gi we putani ge me zorani heni ne inkiku ra inanpa Isina yo na ega yo ta na echo na ega cho ta Akwa kwa ka ni ge me heporani ozo Onyewa anyaya yo la dikiswe ku ni gapo ni me zorani Nyeranya ka Jehovah kahara ndebakoro nobochinketachi neke igwe putas tena lalobi ha Stepani ni ma apaha tineka ena segi goziye ha nini Goziye ha nini nankedi nde baby maji purumpa maji Epekula ka inha ege juwe doke ta Mobu niyo niye ke ta ka ni Epekula tineke bohola inona abamba di tichis teni ma lalobiya inke izirizi Tineke pekula kosa we meti Mepe la anyozo Jehovah Mepe la anyozo Ka ewe ngweke ruwe ba iniji Njema bogeni wero wenge Biafra Kotu na sopro gadi deparagi ruwwe baby Obote Aege timwang we baka we wangula la Biafra Otu na sopro gadi deparagi ruwso wa we ruwwe baby Isai Amen.
Isai Isai Isai
Sir Sir It's our moderator speaking, we can't hear.
Hello, can you hear me, sir? Network is weak for twenty years. Alright.
Go ahead.
Next on our... Next on the item here, we have a welcome address by our own Ebu Honorable um, Soul Administrator of Oweri State and the person of Honorable Nyeze. You're welcome, sir.
There were. Agenda number Officially welcome all Biafrans from all over the world to Oweri State. This address is presented this day, the twenty eighth of April twenty twenty The Oweri State Administrator, Mazi Onyese Ono Onadu Welcome ev- Atm Prime Minister, Honorable Oguchuku Biyala, no. We are thankful for your diligence and dedication in upholding the ideology, mission, and the vision of our two great leaders, Mazi and the our You have shown that you do it. There were. Welcome once again. I welcome our senior advocates, although I have not seen him here. Our sir Your team, they see Arucie Charman, Honorable Emma Madabum To you, sir. For, for covering up the gap and for standing on the side of righteousness. May your days belong in the land of the living.
Amen.
I welcome all our, all our continental and the country reps. I recognize all of you Oweri States, Owerendoma. I welcome as well in a special way our dogged and the never intimidated mid- Our Honorable Minister of Information, Honorable Sonny Aparawa. I welcome you, sir. Welcome to Oweri. I also welcome your deputy, Honorable Raf Ajere. Ajere ne eh eh I have not seen wonderful people like this species of media team who stays all through the night and the day round the clock spreading the good news on airspace. Sometimes when I wake up, you guys are still there. I sleep, you guys are still there. You are wonderful, God bless all of you. You're welcome to Oweri State. I recognize with reference and the honor our B D F, all our B D F commanders. And I thank you spe- in a special way. I salute
Let's walk out of the paper game.
Mazi zinamdeka no I remember our eternal car odumegu His eh May your soul and all the souls of heroes of Biafra rest in freedom. As we say in unison, all hail Biafra and the Biafra will hold thee.
Isai.
First of all, I thank Chukoke Kabiyama for a great day such as this. A special day that all celebrate the
Resurrection.
And indeed today, we remind our people all over the world that the main mission of Jesus was to set his people free from bondage, oppression, and the captive such as the one we have witnessed in this country zoo. This zoo in this contraption called Nigeria. Jesus sets up this record of sacrifice for freedom. He put his name above all other names. This is the significance of the heavy task and sacrifice ahead of every Biafra today. Of the heavy task and sacrifice ahead of every biyafra today. And the liberation of our. My able Atim Prime Minister sir. A great challenge which is obviously against this freedom. It is a divide and conquer. A divide and conquer. Tactics by. This. By our full army masters immediately after the war. To divide. And weaken our people. Used to be weak. All her antics. And we are building back. Gradually with men and women of integrity. Men and the women. Who can no longer be. Form of wind. That is why we are. It is taking us time. In building. Our counties and the districts. And eh. I give you my words today. No matter how slowly. That might take us. We will get it correctly this time. With men. Who are not tough men. Men and the women. Who can stand the test of time. As you can recall. In all fronts. Ranging from biyafra. To biyafra liberation tasks. Which. Three states. We have always been. The last in this. For total freedom yes. We. Have. I had honorable Okiporo. During the last Alanso Town Hall meeting saying. Alanso and the Aludo are going to. Be the first. In providing food for our people for biyafrans. Which he called. The food basket of biyafra nation no. I don't think. This is verifiable. Alowere has been the first in providing food. And hospitality. For. Biyafra. For the people of Ndibo even before the white man came. Ofe Owere. Has been known as the most richly soup. With varieties of ingredients. And these ingredients we are not imported. They are produce. Our only impediment to this. Who have been ravaging our farmland. With their cows. Owere. Has been known. For her hospitality. And the generosity. And all this. By generating new. As such. And the copy from our own dear state Owere. Let's all hands. Be on deck. With more effort. And let's get biyafra recognized. As an independent state. And sovereign nation today. And you will see Owere State. Turn a golden city that was just. All ranification and the human endeavor. I thank everyone of you. For coming. Happy Easter. And eh good evening from here hmm.
There were. There were my honorable soul admin. Eh eh we honorable soul admin of Owere State. Thank you very much sir. Thank you very much sir. Am I coming out loud and clear?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright. Now we proceed. The next agenda. In our program. Is presentation of eh. Cola presentation of cola and breaking of cola nuts. By honorable. Onyeze the Owere State Soul Admin. Thank you.
He cannot talk. What happened?
Honorable Soul Admin are you there?
He has sent a message that he cannot talk his network perhaps.
Okay, okay.
Wait oh wait wait. Where is it?
Onyeze.
Onyeze. Okay, I think network eh. Floking before. Alright, you can use your mic now.
I don't know where. Did I?
Yes, we can do it. You can hear, yeah, you you did finish, you finished, we can hear you now.
Okay. There one eh eh the. Though when IG IG originaka. This origin need to be shown. So that everybody will see. Ono hoga jai.
And show the origin, show only the origin, don't show yourself. Yes, we can see the origin, put put the camera on the origin, don't put it on yourself.
Okay. This is the origin.
Okay. Ona biyala. Is there nobody to hold the camera for his right to face the origin only?
No, I'm the one, I'm I'm the one to pray, I'm the one to pray.
Okay.
I'll show the origin.
Chukoke Kikabiama. Nyawa origin ndo Owere State tiji naka. Neche omo biyafranihu. Ay na boku ginake. Diwa u eka anya un. Ndibo broge anya nelowa nke na de awa un yawa anya un. Anya boku ogino orie orie mini. Mini nenyando. Mini nke ne woe nyino. Anya boku ogina fo. Afo wo afo. Mono ihe ne nono wa. Ine ihe ne nono wa gala. Ayana yoge. Na yo nko. See. Nko wii kukuku ikuku nenyando. Si biko. Biyale kwa oja ayche romo biyafranihu. Biya ke goziyani ke goziyano orie goziy. Goziy. Yana nko. Nyanyana cho ngweno ngwe. Nyawa alannani nyanyi. Wanyana nyawa alannani asinonya nayadi rohine juku abawo zolo. Omo fulane. Ndi ne wene ne wena. Eshebe hashiba sena nyawa alaga kazihanjo. Otu ngwakoko ngwata ngwakoko ngweno ngwoso.
Isee.
Kana bukisi ana arielu.
Okay.
Ofono uka idiaga. Biko Chukoke Kikabiama le oso ngweno ngwainka inaba. Biko biyanyani ngweno ngweneke. Nyanyi. Ko asinonya wetaraji wetarando. Eh wetarando ta. Na omo biyafranine okacha simpa. Nde nene nabosa. Ndi anine beramiti niya no Owere ta. No mo biyafranine barabu. Bru no bochike de ta haga tata ndo. Haga tata ri siki. Ai ga tata ngweno ngwe. Na nu na nyuku wo na mde kano. Nke nde dsisi ji ke nde zuji. Prime Minister Mazi Samone epegi ngweno ngwaya otam si poya po ge si. De nampo na hachukoke Kikabiama primi heni ne. Isee.
Isee. Isee. Isee.
Agameji. Ah. Na ewere origin na handowe. There one. Ten thousand eh eh ten thousand eh eh kamjuwe origin na handowe.
There were. There were.
There were.
Alright. Uh the next agenda. On our program tonight. Is uh picking of cola nuts. By where the state counties. All biyafrans. And friends. It's time. Us to pick. Cola nuts. Thank you.
Owere municipal biyawe origin. Dobre municipal longa biyawe. Di ko where municipal. Ah biya. Ono biyawe origin.
Please our honorable Minister of Information sir. You can give us some eh. Music Owere State music some interlude. While we wait please. Speaking of cola nuts let's come up to pick our cola please.
Le pano.
Here we have one and you can take the hands. Ezhebin biyafra one over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much, am I audible please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, greetings everybody eh eh honorable APM and eh. Honorable Minister of Information and all the honorable members here.
Thank you.
Welcome everybody to Owere State. Uh that just like the music said we na jwe gani biyafor so. Eh I'm picking eh cola nut for eh eh. A Bombisa County with twenty thousand eh eh. Thank you very much.
Bombisa County, thank you. I won BC. Thank you. I'm bringing down your hand. Nende we la kwa nori bekon de manono.
Mazi Chukuniere. Over to you. Mazi Chukuniere. Mazi warre.
Good evening. Hello.
There were.
Am I coming out?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening my honorable Minister of. Communication and Information. Good evening to. Our genuine biyafrans. Who have gathered here on the town hall meeting. About Owere State defatter government. Thank you all for coming. Uh. At this point in time. I want to also welcome our Atim Prime Minister Honorable Oguchuku. Want also thank our our state migrants to our. Beloved Damazunamde Kano. Who is over there in dungeon. For the sake of our. Liberation. And freedom. And also want to thank our Prime Minister who is equally. Paying the price of freedom for our sake. Uh, and that is why we are also here in our own way, making our own little contributions. To make sure that our freedom is achieved. At this point, I want to, in order not to waste much. Uh, for our time, I want to support my so admin of Oware Defacto Governments. Or the kola nuts with sum of five thousand AJ. And support my brother who also have taken a kola nuts on behalf of Bombay City County with five thousand AJ. Nde one.
Nde one.
Nde one.
Please unmute yourself and pick the mic, unmute yourself and pick the mic. I will team, I'll go to you.
And they won't know, uh, welcome to Oware State. Uh, where the window, more no. Nde one and happy Easter. Um. APM, we are welcome to Oware. Mazaparawa. Uh, thank you for what you're doing. Uh, I would, agame were oje. On behalf of Ndo were municipal and Ndo Rada. I may were oje with five hundred thousand AJ, Nde one.
There were, there were, there were, there were.
Hello, that's big money.
Welcome, there were.
Mommy, he has a phone on card, I don't know what's wrong.
You don't know what is wrong, but we can hear you. You want to speak, go ahead. iPhone seven.
Go team, I'm naked. I'm supporting my APM to Oware State with fifty. AJ ma.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'll send my receipt to Dabi girl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matumwa, go ahead, unmute yourself. Matumwa, unmute yourself. Tap on your microphone, Matumwa.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me go ahead?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, because I'm driving, so I'm heading home. But I, I'm just going to start, uh, you know, uh, on to participate on the road. I don't want to do it in my house. But, uh, you know, we are in June. So, uh, thank you, honorable, uh, turn up our one. So, Eware pocket number two, after our PM, Eware number three, okay. Pocket means somebody that is very little. And, uh, yeah, do it. Honorable Van Van Farm. You don't have time, don't stop up. Take a man. I welcome you, uh, APM. I welcome you to, uh, Oware State. My son, I do, you know this. Look this up. And every cabinet member.
Yeah.
I welcome my Bombay City. My Bombay City, Bombay City. Accountant men and women. I thank you, I thank, uh, my fellow Bombay City, those, those are the. Contribute and, uh. And, uh, with, uh, money. Thank you all. Thank you all. Uh, our, our kola nuts with ten thousand AJ, I will send it to our panel's director.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. BRGIE, over to you, unmute yourself. BRGIE, tap on the mic, over to you. BRGIE, unmute yourself. BRGIE, unmute yourself, oh.
Yeah, good evening, Min- Minister Parawa, good evening APM, good evening all Brigi cabinet members present. And, uh, good evening to every other person. Um. Onyeze, the aware state essay is a friend of Aludo. And we are happy to be here to support.
This meeting is being recorded.
Onyeze made a comment during his, uh. Speech of breaking of kola, said, uh, Alanso and Aludo said they are the food basket. That the ware is indeed the food basket. What we know ware for is, uh, Atramo Bangromami.
I want you guys, I want you guys to be talking with, uh, Agenma if you want to drag any point, make when I use Agenma.
I'm, 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 are you a mind reader? You say, that is why, that is why, after, after he finished speak from his, uh. I did not even go there, so I was waiting for him, when it's time, I would. That he will know that he has not said anything yet about that point, until when you came out to strike the debate, aha, that is when we will know. It, hey, for now, he never entered debate, so if you want to drag him in, aha, show him. I will drag him in well, well, because, uh. I school in nowhere, the only thing they know how to do is nightclub. Is nightclub, he see and the Uqobi and they dance, Orieta Brothers. Honorable, come and defend yourself, oh. Um, on, on behalf of Aludo, we are supporting Onyeze with ten thousand naira, ten thousand AJ, please, ten thousand AJ. And, uh, as a good friend of Aludo. I am also supporting him with ten thousand AJ. In addition. I want to use ten thousand AJ to stop any further comment here, don't be playing me Orieta Brothers, Apama, Prama, Pram. Nobody should do, talk any further in here. Don't be playing me, Apama, Pram. I want to make it a total of thirty thousand AJ.
Thank you, thank you. When they are able to meet your match, then they will undo it. Uh, Oware, Oware had been, over to you, come and answer your call here now, now you go start voila. Alright, thank you, thank you, uh, Mazid, I just finished, Mazid, thank you so much. The floor is open to everyone, the floor is open, we continue, we continue.
I never see musical, I never see my musical. I never see my music.
Sorry, I think I put the music.
I want that music. Until, until somebody counter it, not that music, I just want here.
Okay. I think there is someone's hand that is of, uh, honorable Chima.
Hey, I wanted to. I think I'm say the last person who could, who I have. Say, uh, Okumanayav. I don't shock, shock, then cancel all out, and you know, with fifty thousand AJ.
Okay, fifty thousand AJ. Fifty thousand, so, I check you up.
Chima, you want to cancel everything I said?
Everything you could, oh, babash, cancel it. Okay.
Oh, can, can I have that?
Onyeze, the mic is open, you can pick the mic, Onyeze, you can unmute yourself, Onyeze. Tap on your mic. Onyeze, just tap on your mic, unmute yourself. Oware admin, just tap on the mic and unmute yourself. Are you with us? Tap on your mic and unmute yourself, Oware admin. Oware admin.
Hmm. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So we are still on, uh, picking of kola, picking of kola. Please support it, kola, support the picking of kola, the floor is still open. Floor is still open.
Ezewest, Ezewest County.
Okay, we have honorable Milike, honorable Milike, over to you.
Yes, sir, my honorable, yes, sir, my honorable, greetings. All the honorels in the house, is somebody speaking? I can wait.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, it was coming.
Alright, yeah, greetings to all the honorels in the house and I. I send a special greeting to my, uh, APM. And I salute our, uh, the, uh, Nandikano. And I also salute our Prime Minister, uh, Mazie Simon Egbah. And I, I commend the aware state, uh, the fact of, uh, government officials. In their effort to, to put this, uh, town hall meeting together. Because I, I know it's not easy. And I, I also greet everyone that has graced this occasion and, and, um. I would, uh, like to pick the kola nut with the, uh, sum of, uh, uh, fifty Agenma. And, um. I also, uh, want to. Say that this is a healthy competition that the states are involved in, you know, and I know in the future it's gonna be more healthy competition like this. And so, uh, anyone who, who is looking at it in a negative way, no, it's not. Uh, because when Beafra does finally take place, there's gonna be a lot of competitions going on in the healthy way. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable Milike, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, you may not, there were. West County, Ezewest County, come and collect your, your, your kola nut. As Ezewest is coming, we are expecting Ezewest. Mbe singo, Paula.
The baton.
Not coming. I won't be saying I'm taking, I hear you. Emperor.
One again.
Mbe. Inho Ikedru.
I mean, I'm much.
Ikedru. Ohaji and Ebema, please come up, come up.
Edison Amaje, you want to speak, your mic is open.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, uh, honorable State Administrator. Good evening, each and every of us from Oware State. Uh, on behalf of Ezewest, I want to support this. Meeting and the picking of kola nut with the sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you very much. And again, um, uh, good evening, all their friends and the Solar Administrator of Oware State and all the. Uh. People in the meeting. I'm Michael Obunna. I'm supporting Edison Amaje on behalf of Ezewest County with another five thousand AJ. Thank you very much. Nde one, you are. Hello? Nde one, stop now, you can. Nde one, Ndikanu.
Uh, Ofamba, Ofamba.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay, so, Nde was, uh, Mazonyeze. I make the, you do, you go, you get, I'm a drugie. I'm gonna go back and make it late. Do you want to need a bit of a bamboo? I'm gonna move money. So do you want to go to get a bit of material? But I do want to get a bit of my gun on it, you know, like that in the web and I I like to cook. I made you go to talk and make it late, Mazi Nandikale Boblo, I'm gonna make you do to go to get a bit of material. Need to go to talk and make it late, Mazi Simon Eba PM. Do you want to cook a bit of material? Make it late, Mazi, okay, make it late, EPM. Do you want to cook a bit of material? Okay, let's see, I can't, I can't cook a bit of my leg, I got a channel live. I made you pay five thousand, I support you. Five thousand, it's not support you. You would argue, I never win. So do you want to cook a bit of material? I like to cook a bit of material. Say. He said.
Okay, thank you, we continue. We need more, more hands, please. You want to pick the color, just tap on your microphone, honorable Kelo, tap on the microphone and go ahead.
My most honorable Aparawa.
Hold on, please, for those that need your cameras on, you can start cameras now, so that we see your beautiful faces. If you need cameras on, start your camera, so that we see your beautiful faces, those that need cameras.
Sorry, my ear.
Let it be. Okay, go ahead, honorable Kelo.
All right, I thank you very much, honorable Aparawa, you and the media team and our APM and all of you guys that have so much devoted time to this thing, the most high will surely bless you guys and your name will last for eternity, all of you.
Yes.
All of your names will be blessed for eternity. So just keep on doing what you're doing and our prayer is that the most high will grant us, you know, a land of freedom, land of Biafra, heaven on earth, very shortly. So I want to welcome our honorable APM to Oware States uh with cola. And then I will, I will welcome him with fifty ajama for the cola nuts. And then um we'll see again in a little bit. Thank you very much. Uh our A, uh my honorable rep will confirm the receipt. Thank you very much.
There were, thank you.
Thank you, honorable Kelo, we continue. Please tap on the mic and go ahead and give your submission, pick your OG. The floor is open, the floor is open. All right, Chinakeliberty, let's go to the next item, while others will be coming back to pick the OG. Chinakeliberty, are you there? Moderator.
Yes, sir, yes, I'm here.
What's your name?
All right, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, my honorable. Thank you for everyone who has contributed so far. Thank you for supporting the whole states. May the almighty, to go to God, bless us all. You say, you say, you say. All right, next agenda on the program is our APM's address. Please, uh our honorable minister of information, can you welcome our APM with our music before APM takes off the stage? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, as we welcome our APM in the aware states where. Uh honorable Abigail, you have something to say before our APM comes? Yohanis, over to you.
Okay, yeah, I I don't want to support what we are doing with fifty ajama and also announce that of uh Mada Chiniere Amunike, fifty ajama to support our Oware family.
Okay, thank you, thank you, honorable Abigail, thank you.
Thank you, there one.
Thank you, Biafran people, as we welcome uh indomitable honorable APM, honorable locustoon care of the Biafran Republic government in exile, as he takes the stage to address Biafrans in the Oware State de facto government town hall meeting. Honorable APM, welcome to Oware State, they were from here.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable Sonny Aparawa. And thanks for the good job. And uh thanks to everyone that able to join the Zoom today. Uh before I start uh we have to we need to remember those before us. Our leader Admewo Jukun. Our leader Philip Ephion. We remember our leader Mazi Nandikanu. We know where he is today and the reason why the Nigerian terrorist country kidnapped him. And our prime minister, Mazi Simon Egbah, who I'm alting on his behalf. We remember him and we thank these great leaders that have set the example and laid down the foundation of which we are operating on today. We know why our leader Mazi Nandikanu and our prime minister, why they are not here with us is for the same matter, the same cause of Biafra. And uh let me also send a big appreciation on behalf of the Biafran citizens to the Brigay cabinet members, the admin reps and coordinators. And we recognize our BDF, our liberation army that are doing the needful to save our life from the hand of the occupiers that we are chasing and invading from our dear loving country, Biafraland. And we also remember Biafrans that have been sitting at home showing their readiness that they don't want to be part of the dying horse country called Nigeria. And our leader Mazi Nandikanu, the chambu court of our enemy that he will be appearing as fast approaching. And they still going to sit at home to show their support and to let the world know about the injustice against the Biafran people. Fellow Biafrans, we know today is a special day and a remarkable day. We know what the memorial of the death of our Lord Jesus Christ means for the Christian, those that worship uh Jesus Christ. And for the Judaism and the traditionalist, we can't shy away from the fact that they still recognize who Jesus Christ is and they still talk about him. But a lot of us don't really know the reason why he came down to lay his life and pay the price for us. Young terrorists thinks that God love the one that he sent his only begotten son. On behalf of the Biafran people, we claim it first before any other one who claim it. We will claim it before those in Paris, we claim it. We will claim it before those in Germany, we claim it. We will claim it that he came down here for us first. And we believe he came down for all humanity. But we proclaim and claim it first. We will claim it that our Lord Jesus Christ came down to save us from the hands of this monster jihadist terrorist bloodsucking demon. We proclaim and claim that he here to give us salvation. We Biafran people claim that Jesus Christ, our Lord, came to save us because he have seen the injustice upon his people. Because he have seen that he, if he don't come to save us, we not be able to do it by ourselves. That is why we need his special grace and by the intervention of God, our creator. We proclaim that he died for us, we Biafrans proclaim it first. Then other countries, tribe, region, they can claim, yes. But we claim that he came on behalf of us. When we talk about why did he come down here? Is the same thing me and you are doing now. He is the greatest freedom fighter. A lot of us don't know that Jesus Christ, our Lord, is a freedom fighter. He initiated, he is the author of freedom fighting. He fought the Pharisees, the Sadducees. When he went to the temple, he saw they are, what they are doing there. They turn the church, the house of God to force worshiping. They turn the house of God where they be doing gambling, buying and selling. Now that he's not here with us, he have ordered us as the disciples Now that he's not here with us, he have ordered us as the disciples to do likewise, to follow his footsteps, to fight for freedom and injustice. If you proclaim to be follower of Christ, and you don't know what it means, that means you are following foolishly, foolishly. Jesus Christ, our Lord, is the number one greatest freedom fighter. Jesus Christ, our Lord, taught us not to be dishonest. He taught us to love our neighbors. He taught us how to live and let live. And while we have on the other side, those is Islamophobia, those are their champion, who his name, I'm not gonna be scared to talk about him, which they call Mohammed, their leader. Mohammed taught his followers how to kill, how to destroy, how to invade, how to call us infidel, how to make us less humanless. Can you construct the difference? Which one will you follow? The one that show delight to salvation? The one that taught you how to live with your neighbors? How to love one another? The one that taught you not to abuse children, underage marriage? Is it the one that taught you how not to be a terrorist? We love and cherish the number one greatest freedom fighter, our Lord Jesus Christ, who taught us how to live in this beautiful world, to be able to coexist and live with our neighbors? The Biafran people have demonstrated this all over Nigeria, before the exit from Nigeria, which we are invading Nigeria from our territory, Biafraland. All over Nigeria today, any village, any community, you don't find a Biafran, that community don't exist, even to the rural area. You will see a Biafran doing buying and selling, whether if they have big shop or small shop, chemist or whatever shoemaking. And when they go to these communities, they leave and let live, they blend and mingle in that community. The house they leave, they buy it, and they pay for it. Whatever they do, if it is a land, they purchase that land, and they follow the law and order of that community, get all their paperwork's right. They don't forcefully take what does belong to them. And the Biafran people, why they are still in with Nigeria, and for the Biafrans that still live in other part of Nigeria, doing businesses, they comply with the law and order of that community or the state. They are not invaders, they don't go there and start committing crime, raping women and children, raping cow cattle, dog, everything rapeable, they don't do that. They abide by the principles of our Lord Jesus Christ, the author of how we can live and let live, and live like brothers and sisters, and love one another. I'm back to raise the issue of the clergyman. The Pharisees today, you see them parading themselves with the symbol of the cross, demonstrating themselves in the congregation of Christ, of how pure and right they are. And these Pharisees never teach or taught their followers that Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter like our leader Mazin Namdikan. They never taught their followers that Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter like our Prime Minister Mazie Simonewa. They never taught their followers that Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter, just like our leader Ojuku. They never teach or taught their followers that Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter, just like our leader Philip Ephion, that one said, if the Nigerian state don't treat the Biafrans right, they will rise up again. And these so-called Pharisees, men of God, bishop, reverend, whatever they choose title they want to give themselves, titles that they are not qualified, and God did not ordain them for. They never speak the truth to the congregation, the real meaning of our Lord Jesus Christ's sacrifice. The real meaning is the same reason me and you are here today, fighting for just cause, fighting for freedom, fighting for the right for the Biafran people to live, fighting for our generation, fighting so we can be accepted by our Creator. Because if we don't fight, our God who created us will lay a curse on us. He have given us the wisdom, he have given us the knowledge, he taught us how to fight, he taught us how to do what is right. Why are we shying away from the truth? For my fellow Christian, celebrating the great day, the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ, please reflect on this and ask yourself question. Your pastor, your leader, in your place of worship, is here only telling you how you will go to heaven and enjoy heaven? Why these leaders live in mansions that cost millions of dollars? They have private jets that cost millions of dollars? They live in a losing us life? They live in a place that you imagine, if this clergyman will be going to heaven very soon, why is he acquiring all this weight? Then when he leaves to heaven, who is he going to leave it for? And why the congregation, the members of congregation, live in abject poverty? Some of them struggle to pay their tithes? These Pharisees have starved us. These Pharisees, so-called leaders in the time of our Lord Jesus Christ, in the temple, when they we are doing the same buying and selling, how to profit themselves, not to preach about the truth and salvation of people of God, our Lord Christ condemned them. That is the reason why they so angry, they angry about his teaching, whatever he do, they angry about it. We today as the disciples of our Lord Jesus Christ, is our duty to do likewise the same to the leaders of the congregation that are Pharisees. We being the part of the twelve disciples of our time, is our job to condemn the evil leaders that are not saying the truth, the real meaning of being Jesus Christ followers. It's our duty to let them know the truth, that Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter. He set the example for people like Mandela, he set the example for Gandhi from India, he set the example for Reverend Junior Martin Luther King, he set the example for so many that believe in what freedom, freedom is all about. We the true followers, it's time we rise up. Remember there is a time in Europe, when the event of crusade occur. All those that have come to destroy the congregation, there was a revolution, and a crusade was carried out. What are we waiting for? Are we going to wait until they kill us all? Our Lord Jesus Christ is not coming back now tomorrow. He already given us the assignment to do the work of God, to do this, his will, to condemn anything condemnable, to preach, to say the way it is, to fight and protect the congregation. And who is the members of the congregation? The members of the congregation are the Biafran people. Every place of worship in Biafraland, who worship there? Are the worshippers from heaven? Are the worshippers from the marine war? Are the worshippers from underneath? The worshippers are the Biafrans that dwell in the geographical location. We are the Christians that been massacred by the Nigerian state. We are the Christians that been massacred by the Fulani heisman. We are the Christians that have been killed by the Islamic terrorist bloodsucking demos. And we are the Biafrans that reside in that northern part of the former eastern Nigeria, which we are no longer part of Nigeria. Biafran is already redeclared, and the process starts not on the 29th. You know sometime we get it wrong. Biafran redeclaration process did not start on the 29th. It started the day when the Biafran people, both home and abroad, start casting their vote to leave Nigeria. That is when the process started, not on the 29th. The 29th, the grievances were just ready to the war, to be a witness of what we be doing that they don't know about. Then on the second, the vote of over fifty million Biafrans, we accounted. So the over fifty million Biafrans, they are part of the redeclaration, not just the five hundred and seventeen delegates. The over fifty million Biafrans are part of the redeclaration of Biafrans. All of them that have voted, they participated or participate in the process, because without their vote, the five hundred and fifteen will not find the ground to do the job to ratify the count and pronounce the redeclaration. So the over fifty million of Biafrans kudos, we appreciate all of you, we appreciate your cooperation, we love you all, and it's time we go back to work. And it's time we condemn anything condemnable, just like our Lord Jesus Christ condemned the Pharisees in the temple, just like he made it clear that what they are doing is despicable to God, what they are doing is not right, that what they are doing is not acceptable by Chukwukike Abiyama Jehovah, our God, he condemned them. Why can't we, the disciples of this time, condemn them as well? Starting from our leader Ojuku, accompanied by our leader Philip Ephion, they condemn the existence of Nigeria because it's not designed or made for us. Before Wajruke fell short of the glory of Biafran, he turned to Judas Iscariot. At first, he condemned the Nigerian state, because before Judas Iscariot, so our Lord Jesus Christ, he used to preach the gospel. And our leader Mazin Namdikan also condemned the Pharisees in Biafraland. Likewise, all our leaders, the genuine ones, including our Prime Minister Mazie Simonewa, and we the disciples, we the over fifty million Biafrans, condemn the Pharisees in Biafraland. It's time for the congregation to rise up. It's time we invite Nigeria out of our land. It's time we go after all the Pharisees. If a member of the congregation turned to be a Pharisee, who condemn that member, whoever it is, our freedom is in our hand, our Lord Jesus Christ have given us the template. I believe some of us today, starting from the administrative of Oweri, if we don't take anything from this page, I think one thing I wanted to take home with you is that our Lord Jesus Christ is the author, the founder of freedom fighting. And we are following his footsteps, we are fighting a just cause, we want to be free, we want to live in our land, and it's our right to preach the gospel, it's our right to fight for our freedom, because Biafran, Jesus Christ came to serve the people of Biafran. We Biafran proclaim that he came to save our life, that he initiated the freedom fighting, and we are following his footsteps, because he came to save us from the hand of the terrorist jihadist bloodsucking demos. He came to save us from the hands, remember during the time when he was young, he said in the last days, many of these Pharisees will come in his name, they will perform miracles, they will perform wonders, and he also made it clear that a lot will come and say worshippers of Jesus Christ are not acceptable by God, and other so-called worshippers will come, and it is happening in our very eyes. We find the other opposition that want to Islamize the whole world with their terrorists, killing, calling whoever that is not worshiping their god infidel, that that person don't deserve to live, which god will you worship? Who will you follow? Fellow Biafrans, fellow citizens of Oweri, there is a video that was just played earlier on, talking about Oweri, it's a great city or a great town. Please follow, citizens of Oweri, we want to proclaim today, please, let us stand, Oweri is a great city, or Oweri is a great town, to Biafran is a great city, Biafran walk him back, let us stand it to all Biafran territory, from Isoko, Igodo, Migodo, Ovira, Owari, Akusapena, to Ekan. To Ekan. To Aquaibon. To Etayana. To Kalaban. To Hafian. To Abreban. To Ihiamufu. To the lower Benway and Kogi. We extend the Biafra is okay back everywhere in Biafran territory. Let's fight the just cause, fight for freedoms. So we can be free from the hands of our enemy. Our Lord Jesus Christ have already set the example. Because he is the number one freedom fighter of our time and we follow his footsteps. Let keep up the water, water, and then do I can on. Let's fight every enemy in Biafran land. From the governor to the chief agency, to the leader of the community, to the leader of the church. Anywhere you find a Pharisee. Anywhere you find a subaltern that have come to derive us from our joy, that have come to kill us. That have come to destroy who we are as a people, fight back. Fight for your freedom. If freedom is not worth fighting for, I don't think. Our Lord Jesus Christ will let everything he is doing in heaven and come down here on earth. To do what on earth if it is not to fight for freedom. And all you Pharisees and Sadducees in the congregation. All you members of the congregation, if you don't go after your enemy, share unto you. If you don't go and fight for your freedom. If you don't go and, if you don't go after. Whoever that is bringing these terrorists, whoever that is bringing this enemy to our territory, share unto you. If you one of those. That participated in today's celebration to, for the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ. And you don't know the meaning, I believe now you do. Jesus Christ is a freedom fighter and he urges to fight for our freedom. Any subaltern that is bringing these people to burn our houses. That is bringing these people to rape our mother, our children. Anyone that is colluding, bringing these terrorists to Biafran land. Come after that person if you can in your own way. If you can support liberation, support your freedom. In the time of our Lord Jesus Christ, his disciples and his followers. They donate, they gave him food sometime. They welcome him in their house and they showed their hospitality. They gave the energy to say, Lord Jesus, keep doing it. And we Biafrans, we need to contribute. To support the freedom fighters that are doing the job. That are following the example of our Lord Jesus Christ. We will not let them overrun our land. Look at what is happening in all over the Zulu terrorist country called Nigeria. There is fire burning everywhere, even in the north of the Nigeria, even in the southwest of the Nigeria. Why do you choose to be, still belong in a country like that? Thank God that over fifty million cast their vote. Thank God that over fifty million re-declared Biafra. People that are re-declared Biafra, if you don't know, please. The process did not start on the twenty nine, we read the grievances on the twenty nine. And the re-declaration is not done just by one person, one woman or one man. And it's not by the five hundred and seventeen. It's the over fifty million Biafrans, both those that are home that are not able to make it to the venue, they all participate. Thank you people of Owere, do I can on, fight your enemy, whoever come to kill you. That person is your right, you deserve to live. If they don't want you to live, they will not live. A child that said his mother will not sleep. That child likewise will not sleep, ndewo.
Ndewo APM, God bless you for this wonderful message. Anakokwa keva.
APM is.
Ndewo APM, God bless you.
APM is smoking.
For picking them out today, lives at the peace and piracy. Thank you.
Again.
Thank you, thank you, APM. Honorable Abigail, over to you, moderator, are you there?
Oh, we request you. Umwe, we request you know. We need to endorse this our APM's speech.
Yes.
He actually striked the sapet on both his head and his tail. And I'm going to endorse it with twenty Ajemah. And try to tell them who will be listening and those of them who actually. Are stood on the popey today to celebrate the resurrection of Christ. That have refused to quote some scriptures to hit their people. Jesus is a symbol of what we are doing for our freedom. He began the freedom fighting. Because what we are doing today could actually be taken from the book of Luke, I mean, some port to, our book, yeah, Luke. Twenty-two thirty-six. Let them read and teach the people listening to them, those followers who refuse to read the scripture themselves. He did not only say they should say their cloaks and go for sword. He equally asked them to pick their paws. What do we need paws is for? The paws is where our Ajemah used to be. He said, we should bring it out, we should go and take it, we should, because he knows Ajemah must be inside and we will need it. And he said, we should go and take not only the paws. Handbag, handbag. He knew he is going to need it and prepare for a time like this. Persecution, killings, Fulani terrorism, all of these are the hardship. He has prepared us for because he has fought and fought, he tried, they tried, he tried, finally they took him out. And before he left, he handed over this instruction to them, they must do it. Now they are not teaching them that. There is another verse they never want to touch, Matthew eleven twenty-two. That we had a king, we just said from the beginning, from the time of John the Baptist. The kingdom of God suffered violence. And is by violence, the violent will take it by force. These people on the popey do not want to quote these scriptures at all. To the listeners, to the followers and to the congregation. This scripture, but it's an abomination unto them. But will this, with these two scriptures. Umunim, umi, umu, umu Biafra, umi, umu Owere. We are going to move with these two verses, tell them that the paws is equally needed. He said, we should go and take look for paws, we must, that is the paws, now money they did inside Ajemah. We must use it to prepare for the journey. I, I mean, Jesus has done it all. Christ has done it all, he has said it all, he is the what, first freedom fighter. Thank you my APM, thank you my APM, and God bless you. This, this message will get to them. Those people and Sadducees, may the name of the law be praised, thank you so much.
Ndewo. Ndewo. Ndewo.
Thank you, Honorable Abigail, Ndewo. Honorable Oke, over to you, unmute yourself.
And I want, good evening, Sam, APM, good evening, Honorable Parama. You don't, you put your, this thing again for timer. You, you know, just allow the finger to leave, you don't spot time, like as, as usual. If, APM, I agree to, I agree to, thank you, good day and happy Easter to all. Uh, committed members, fellow Biafrans, good comrades, uh, good citizens of Biafra. And APM, it's just, it'd be like saying, you just pick the thing that is just Nakamas is supposed to be. I, I, I asked my SA to pick a color, I wrote him a message to pick color. I for Alud, but maybe Inosiam, so as this, this Samon just finished, I say, okay, good. Uh, it's now, well, I will still use the thing to pass the message and support the APM. Yes, Biafrans, you now don't hear. Even if you are following the scripture. All those things, those lifestyles where they write in the scriptures, it's just the same thing happening today. The life of Christ, his aggressiveness, because to turn table, to go into the high chief Everest and turn the, turn, turn the church upside down. He must have been a.
Angry.
Yeah, you know, I know, I don't know what to do, what they are called, that's. As it, now high, now high chiefs, I think there are high chiefs in the, in the, in the synagogue.
Yeah, they are, they are like the priest and all that stuff.
Uh, yes, for, for, for him to be brave, go there and, in fact, that was why they killed him. It's not that, uh, enough for any other thing, because he was aggressive, so now they said, who dared him? The same way our leader, uh, come out bold enough to stand all the forties. Now they say, he said must enter. The same way the APM come out bold enough, uh, 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 stood his ground. They say, he said must enter. The same way our APM is hammering it today and they are saying, they are calling, he said must enter. That is, that is the war, that is the people and nothing changes, so it's left for us to, uh.
Over Mandela, Mandela, oh, you know, we know what happened to him.
Yes, the war, so you must be, once you tell the truth, once you tell the truth, once you are bold to tell the truth, you must die. They, the war, they must conspire and call you names to kill you, so. Uh, that is, everything is, is bam, your salmon today, it's just like, it's just a, a good Easter, Easter Sunday salmon. If so, Biafrans, uh, let us do the net for and say enough is enough. If those who, who used to be afraid, there's no need being afraid any longer. Come out bold and it is only when we come out bold to stand this aggressor that they will know, yes, that we too want our freedom, that we. Once we are bold, they will be the ones to run away. They always come around because, uh, they see, they still feel that fear in many of us. That is when they, that is when they have the audacity to continue attacking us. So we must learn to breathe up and confront the enemies squarely. And victory shall be ours. So not to waste so much of our time, thank you, APM, thank you, Owere, uh, for your. Good gesture hosting this, uh, today, at least, uh, it keeps us busy again and brought out this, uh. Perfect salmon on the day for us to know that, yes, we have to breath up and confront the things that have been eating us. The Pharisees and the Sadducees, they are the same chiefs that we have today in our land. The same chiefs, and there's the governors and all the rest of them, they are the Pharisees and the Sadducees. As is written in the scripture. So I'm supporting APM, uh, with, uh, forty Ajemah today. Thank you very much, thank you, Biafrans.
Thank you, Honorable, God bless you, Ndewo, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Owelewo Kembak.
No. Go ahead, I will, go ahead. Honorable, unmute yourself.
Although they don't know, Biafrans.
Ndewo.
I'm glad I didn't miss my flight to Biafra today. Yeah, so to support all protocols observed. Uh, to support APM today, Agame G fifty Ajemah. Warekwa do yaleme. Ndewo, Ndewo no.
Ndewo.
Biafrans, Ndewo no.
Ndewo, God bless you, thank you.
Hallelujah, send the receipt, what?
And send it to me, I'll send it to the, um, to the forum.
Okay.
You can send it to the continental, um, platform.
Oh, Mazie, Manik.
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, you too.
What that big girl, you want your dad, you want your dad, dad come for you, you want, you want your Owere, you want your.
Ewo, ewo da, nda, mwonyore, awo mambo.
And the, and the, but I know my, I hear when my SA, they, they order for band, they.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
It's all good, it's all good.
Go ahead, Richard Entego, unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening, good evening.
Ndewo.
You are, you are just having me, right? This is too, it's very fast, it's like quite one and five, well, friend. I am greeting to everyone. Uh, I'm so happy today to join this, this meeting.
Thank you so much.
And that's my first time because I've been looking forward to, uh, you know, to joining, but. I'm glad for, for this opportunity, for today's opportunity. Uh, I'm greeting also our APM for his kindly and good speech. Um, not waste my time, waste our time, I'm supporting fifty Ajemah today. And one that, Abigail, I'm greeting as well is Richard from the bank. Thank you.
Okay, Richie, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you, you're welcome, thank you very much.
Hey, it's all good, it's all good.
I think, uh, probably I will send you the receipt if.
Okay, send me, send me the receipt. Send me, you can send the receipt to the forum, okay?
Okay, the forum, okay, no problem, I will.
Um, send it to the forum, they will pick it up there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Richie, God bless you.
Bless you too.
Um, Ezra Bina. Biafra one, over to you, unmute yourself. Thank you, Honorable Richie.
Yeah, thank you very much once again. I appreciate everybody, my honorable APM. My people used to say, I'm supporting this speech of my APM with thirty thousand AJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ezra Benah Biafra.
Thank you.
Ezra Benah Biafra, you can bring your hand down. Okay, you're doing it.
Let's go back and start doing what the Mosai sell tell us to do. That is what our our APM is echoing today. If we start doing that, then you know, the world will see that we are ready for Biafra. It's on to do that. If you don't do it, then you know, uh you know, I don't think many people will support us. But once we start doing what what is necessary, following the comments are the most high. Then the world will see that we are serious and we get our Biafra and our those that are being held will be released. Our Prime Minister and our and um and our leader Mazinandekano will be released. So again, I support um um our APM with two hundred and fifty, the color not fifty. I will send the receipts. My honorable rep can confirm. Uh he knows where we put the receipts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss.
Thank you.
Deuwo.
Deuwo.
Thank you, thank you. Let me say something in appreciation of our APM speech. And um aware states citizens. And the entire citizens of Biafra. Um. Easter is not just Easter. It marks part of the three religions officially known of the Biafran government. We have the Christian, the Jewish and the traditional. And we also dear and our whole the traditions of all these religions in high extreme. So we salute the Christendom who celebrates in simplicity the power of the resurrection, the crucifixion and the redemptions of sins of mankind. We salute every Christian and this time also the Jewish and the traditionalist, most especially of the Christian extract. Um to put more fire so that people will understand the real significance of the Easter and what should be at this time, what we should look up to. It's not time for merriment, it's not time for mere sober reflections. But it is time to understand that um since Palm Sunday or Palm Monday started till today now, it's been like a week, right? And we now had the Friday, which is called the Good Friday. We now have Sunday now being the resurrection day where people go to the tomb and then look at the tomb and come back. But starting from the Palm Sunday, it wasn't a joyful and a joyous Palm Sunday as it should be. It was a massacre Palm Sunday. It was a massacre Palm Monday to every Christians that are domiciled in Nigeria. This is what you should understand. It's been a red and a danger and a bad Friday. It wasn't a good Friday. It wasn't a good Friday as it is stipulated in the scripture to you as Christians domiciling Nigeria. It wasn't a good Friday. It was a black Friday. It was a red Friday. It was a massacre Friday. It was a slaughter and a genocidal Friday. Same as the Saturday, as you were mourning the dead of Christ, expecting his resurrection on the third day. It has been a massacre Saturday and a massacre Sunday. And here you are today. On the third day, we are celebrating. Don't just celebrate, but I have this reflection of what is this perception of Jesus Christ on retaliation against religious violence? Ask yourself that question. What did Jesus Christ say in the book of Luke twenty-two verse thirty-six? He that had no sword, let him sell his sword, let him sell his garments, sell his cloak, sell his house, sell his car and then get one. And don't be a coward. Bible makes you to understand that we are not born with a spirit of fear. That we are born with a spirit of courage and of sound mind to be able to fight the enemies, the terrorists that are coming. There is nothing like Christian persecution. That is one thing you should understand because this is the perception that they have given you in One Nigeria. I'm not just speaking to the Biafran people now, I'm speaking to every Christian because you have been so massacred from the far north to the entire east. And then they use the connotation of Christian persecution to deceive all of you. What was the essence of Jesus Christ dying? What was the essence of the matters in the Bible? Those Christians that were persecuted in the Bible, what was their essence? If John the Baptist happened to have gone through that road. If we had many prophets that went through that road. If we had Jonah in the belly of the fish for days, what was the essence of him being in the belly of the fish? What was the essence of Jesus Christ going through that long train of event of his freedom fighting? Why did he died? He was persecuted. Many prophets of all were persecuted. So you are not to be persecuted again for you to say you want to become a second Jesus. Or you want Jesus Christ to come and die a second time? No. The Israelis saw the terrorists when they woke up on October seven, who cut off the heads of their babies, women and children. They did not go back to go and start singing, it is Christian persecution. No. They understood and identified that this is war that has been declared against the Christians and the Jews. Then they understood that you have to stand up and fight a common war. This is a common war that you have to fight. It is not a war of Christian persecution. Don't call it Christian persecution so that you will face the needful, so that you will not be Christian correct or politically correct by using persecution so that you say you want to be like the matters in the Bible that were persecuted. No. It is not your time to be persecuted again because those ones that were persecuted before, they paid the price. The war they are delivering now is a war of fire for fire, battle for battle, sword for sword, bomb for bomb, weapon for weapon. Full and victorious is coming with AK forty-seven. They are coming with all manners of weapons to cut off your heads. Then you go and carry Bible and start singing and say you're doing fasting and prayer. There is time for everything, time to hate and time to love, time for war and time for peace. Time to use the Bible and pray and then time to use the physical armaments to face the enemies. Christians should understand that as you celebrate the dead and resurrection of Jesus Christ, reflect on what perception Jesus Christ has when somebody come to kill him. When somebody come to kill you, if you should fold your two hands and give to the person to kill you in the name that you want to be persecuted to have glory. The full and victorious, when they kill you and when they want to go and wear bomb to go and exclude one place, they say they are dying to gain one thousand visions in heaven. You are you aligning them to bomb you. How many vision do you want to go and get your own? It is time for every Christian to wake up and understand that when somebody come to kill you, you wake up and do the needful and defend yourself. It is called safe defense. It is this safe defense that Biafrans have exercised all these years that they have called us terrorists, called us all manners of names. But today, everyone are waking up to understand that kidnapping Mazinandekano was bad. Detaining our Prime Minister Simon Egbah has been bad. Disappearing Biafrans from the homeland and taking their organs from their body and selling for a lucrative price has been bad. They have come to understand that the safe defense we activated was not wrong. But that we did something that needed to have been done to defend our women and children and will continue. So every Christian, starting from the north down to Biafran land, understand that this time, this Easter is a reminder for you to become a warrior and not to become a weakling and not to become a cowardice. Wake up and then face the terrorists as they come. Because they have come for a reason. They did not come to come and sing your name, Christian persecution. No. Wake up and also persecute them if they call the name persecution. Defend yourselves because you can be waking up from twenty twenty-one, you carry five hundred bodies in Plato, you carry two hundred in Benue, you carry one fifty. Twenty twenty-three, the list are endless. Twenty twenty-four, the list are endless. Twenty twenty-five, now you are in. And then you are singing in Easter. And throughout the Easter week, it has been massacre upon massacre upon massacre upon massacre. You say God give and God take it. God did not give and say another person should come and take your life and then you allow the person to take your life. Why did he say you should take dominion over the things in the planet Earth? So those that are taking dominion over your life and taking your life, what are you doing about it? Is it when they take all of you out that you come to realize that you need to fight? Wake up and understand the common enemy. Jesus Christ was not a weakling, but he was a warrior who came to show you the right thing to do. So please, Christians in One Nigeria, Christians everywhere, Christians in Biafran land, do what you know is best recommended by the scriptures. Defend yourself whichever way you can. And those in Biafran land, you know that we have a defense mechanism already. We have our army. All you have to do is to support our army. Because this is the reason why the entire world is speaking about us. This is the reason why One Nigeria is hating us because we saw these dangers ahead of time, then we activated our self-defense. So while the crying and the wailing is ongoing on other part of One Nigeria, we are laughing. That's why they say, as they depend them, it is with us. As they depend them, it is with us because we prepared ahead of time. So let's continue to be smart by doing the needful. Thank you, our APM, and thank you, aware people. We continue. Maybe if former Johannes over to you, Alanso admin.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Deuwo.
Hi, yeah, good evening from homeland. Uh on behalf of my state, that is Alanso State, I am picking color with the sum of seven thousand Ajem. Thank you once again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alanso State and Deuwo. Deuwo, thank you.
Yes, Honorable Minister, over to you, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Greetings to all Biafrans once again and greetings my Minister of Information. Greetings my Deputy Minister of Information as well. APM, thank you and greetings for that beautiful and uh notable speech. You see, um, yes, sir, you see, our people. Um. I don't know, uh we 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 uh we tell all these little folk laws and um and for some reason we don't remember. Like one that's that comes to mind is the story of the the lamb, the lamb and the the lion. And the lion.
Man, you're not gonna turn your camera off. Why? You want you want me to know how you tell this? Now, your head one did not go hit hit me.
Yeah, good night, Kebab man. Anyway, that's okay, that's okay.
Your your mic is on.
Ma'am, it is on, is it on, right?
No, go ahead, go ahead. He's not talking about you. He's on phone.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And and.
I've muted him, go ahead.
And the.
Yeah, I've muted you, I've muted you, APM. Honorable Minister, go ahead.
All right, and and the 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 lamb, the 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 lion had requested for requested that the lamb send one of uh her baby, you know, her children uh to uh to come and watch her baby. And so the lamb asked uh the oldest, hey, hey, how often will something happen to you uh before you learn a lesson? And the oldest said, oh, yeah, there were seven of them. The the oldest, oh, yeah, seven times, you know, it happened to me seven times. And mother lamb said, no, 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 that's okay. And then she asked every one of them on the, she went to the last one, the last one says, hmm, I I will learn from what happens to another person. That's what that's what will teach me a lesson. Mother lamb said, yeah, 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 you the one that will go to the to lion's home to babysit. And uh and that story, you know, it leaves a a mark. I mean, it lives, it lives, it lives a mark on my in my mind because we many things have happened to us. Uh not even in my time, but in our parents' time, in our grandparents' time. And some of us are still behaving as if uh you know, what we what is happening today is some is an aberration. Um. You know, and it's not, uh yet we all go to church. I mean, uh who does not know that uh uh that the the that that Christ himself advocates? Yes, sir. Who who does not know that Christ himself advocates for you to pick up your, you know, your your farm weapon, your farm uh uh tools and convert them into weapons? We know, he he said that. Um, and so our people need to wake up. Uh APM has really hit the nail on the head. It's it's no time for us to to beat around the bush. It's no time to be politically correct. It's no time to be uh uh just brush off what, you know, uh no, it 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 ha- it uh don't mind them. No, no, no. Wake whatever you are, wake up. Because it's gonna be different this time. It's very different. As a matter of fact, I I I I was reading something about how these people uh 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 behaved in Central African Republic. Is that, yeah, Central African Republic? And it it is almost similar to what is going on in Nigeria today. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, if they lost that's in Central African Republic, that means they learned some lessons in Central African Republic. So they're not gonna come back, they're not gonna do the same thing they did in Central African Republic in in the zoo now. They are really going to make sure they correct all the mistakes they made in Central African Republic. But all these things are falling on deaf ears. They we are not listening. And and therefore I I truly beg, plead and 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 ask our people to reconsider to reconsider their behaviors. Because uh they say the uh to be forewarned is to be uh to be to be forearmed. Uh and therefore I will continue my contribution with uh to that APM speech with a hundred Ajemah. And that will bring me to total of a hundred and fifty Ajemah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Minister, thank you.
Deuwo. Honorable Minister.
Deuwo.
All right, we have Chris. Chris, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Wonderful. Good evening to my fellow Biafrans. My APM, I thank you so much for your wonderful speech. My International Commissioner Minister, I respect you, the man of valor and all the protocol, standing by the existing protocol. I want to update from Aludho, an update from Aludho. Our sister Unice. Our sister Unice Peter from Canada. The thirty thousand Ajem who did not supported the over the branch. Mazi Omenka, five thousand Ajem. Wada Yoma, five thousand Ajem. Well, that was five thousand Ajem. That is the total of forty-five thousand Ajem. I will forward it to the account even this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Continue. Okay, Chris, your hand is up. Over to you.
Yes, sir. Sorry for coming back again. I don't even mean to disturb. But I I communicate with my SA, SA should announce that they have already given for the states, I've been giving twenty Ajem. Then he himself, I've given ten Ajem. Then okay, I've given ten forty Ajem. So with forty Ajem, seventy Ajem, which is Aludho is giving one hundred and fifteen Ajem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Aludho.
Uh uh um, ma'am, I think you convert my note to Ajemah, uh say Ajemah.
Okay, you only say Ajemah.
Uh yes, yes.
Okay, ma'am, so Mazi okay give forty Ajemah. So we convert it to, you know how to communicate, reach you to them. But okay, you should know how to convert it. The maker should convert it better. I don't know about that much. So yes, we'll get back to you maybe this evening. Yes, I'm forward it. We'll get back to you after this evening, not tomorrow, first in the morning. Thank you. Much.
All right, the floor is open. The floor is open. Let's continue, please. Support the aware states, support the aware states. Turn off meeting.
Yeah, greetings once again. Uh, I want to thank everyone who continues to stand on the existing protocol. Um. Just like, I just want to support our APM for the address made, just like others have spoken. The season of the celebration, it start with celebrates, it's just like what we are doing. So at this point or this celebration, we remember our heroes and our great leader and our prime minister. Because it's just like, just like what our APM said, they followed the two step of our Lord Jesus Christ. Because even our Lord Jesus Christ when he came, he said that he come for the lost ship of, uh, law, uh, the lost ships of Israel, that is a train of Musa, train of Chukwuka Biama. So our leader often remind us that he came for words for the train of Chukwuka Biama. And Chukwuka Biama sent him for this error. And he is not fighting just for the train of Chukwuka Biama, but he fighting for the entire humanity. Especially in this, those that find themselves in this compression called Angiri. So. The little example I want to give is like when our Lord Jesus Christ, when they crucified him as he was hanged on the cross. At that hour, we are told the three o'clock hour, when everywhere became back and then the veil and the temple tear and then those who were there, especially those who crucified, who we are watching and then looking at thinking that they will now, they begin to confess, ah, this man was what truly a son of God, he was truly what he said. So the same thing is happening in the zoo today. Many of them who can get our leader, any of them who condemn our leader, most of them who call him all manner of them. Today, they are seeing all the things he have told them and they are confessing and saying three of them have been able to summon the courage and say, why is this man stay held in the dungeon? Why are they still holding this man? Why are they keeping this man? But those who are have been to to quench the lights of Chukwuka Biama, which they cannot, who they will never achieve in this life. They still put their ear and just like, uh, it happened during the days of Pharaoh. And that is exactly what is going to happen to them. At the same time, they have moved on to also heard our prime minister far away in Finland, using Finland now to go them, go to see if they can be able to quench that fire, which they did during the time of our Lord Jesus Christ, thinking that as he was fighting to liberate the people, they thought that by killing him, that would be what the end of the mission. Not knowing that it was the stepping stone, uh, stone of what achieving the mission. So on that note, I want to support the address of our prime minister with five thousand AJ. I will order everything to my, uh, soul admin, where it uh, states, they won't.
They won't, they won't, they won't. Next person, please, Honorable Chinny, over to you. Uh, Onyese, can I pick the other music you showed me? Anytime. Okay, thank you. Honorable Chinny, over to you.
France.
Thank you so much, honorable Sonny. Uh, thank you, thank you, no worry, Imo stays. Thank you so much. God bless you all. Um, to my APM and the bridge cabinet. So God bless you, thank you for all that you all are doing. So without waste of time, I just want to, um, support our Imo. Imo people with twenty thousand AJ. Oh, where is it? Okay, sorry, oh, where is states, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you. Onyese, that, that video is no more available on YouTube, check it. Um, Honorable Otah, over to you and meet yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, my people. Ha. If, if, uh, if, uh, if we would have finished this, if we finish without me, um, taking a part for me. Okay, we had your bro, we are. But don't know. No, we can't, well. No, we don't know, Kebba, never can you. Now, that's bola. Hello.
There were answer, there were respond.
No, we're in the back, I'm not. I'm a farmer. Hey, we could, uh, I, I would like, um. Uh huh. Onyese, there were. Uh, like to use that ten thousand AJ, uh, to say, I need that to worry, oh, for the music. Please, somebody should put it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chinny.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Honorable Sonny, that music is playing on my own. I can, I can.
From here, it's showing, uh.
Can I send it?
Unavailable.
Okay.
Maybe from my location, it's not supported or not allowed to view.
I'm a farmer. I'm a farmer.
Wery admin, I think, uh, you should be checking your time on the wrapping up. Over to you, sir. Moderator, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, sir. Hello, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, I can hear you, I can hear you. Communicate to your state admin. Okay, happy girls' hand is up, Honorable Happy Girl, over to you.
Yeah, quick one, quick one. One of our brother and one father is supporting Oweri with fifty AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, moderator and the state admin, please.
Okay, sir. Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, our honorable APM and all the bridge cabinet members and everybody present. This is Wery, turn off meeting, I say May Chukwaka Biama bless us all. He say, he said, he said. All right.
He said.
The next, uh, the next agenda in our program tonight, we are wrapping it up. Is both of thanks by the Oweri State Administrator. The person of honorable.
No, is Mazie Chima, is Mazie Chima the new JC admin?
Okay, all right. So please, honorable Chima, you just have me over to you, sir. Both of thanks.
Can you guys hear me? Yes. And they, and they won't know, um. I'm in a place where I can't put on my camera, but, uh, I want to, on behalf of Oweri State Administrator, Mazie Onyese and his cabinet. Uh, thank everybody, thank the APM, Mazie Inkere. Thank Mazie Abarawa and all the bridge cabinets who have honored today's occasion and who have also given to the course today. We say, May Chukwaka Biama bless all of you and continue to prosper you people uh, so that you can give more. uh, so that you can give more in the defense of our land. I want to appreciate everybody. Uh, we thank you all for all the other states and the administrators and reps that supported today, Ndawere. Ndawere she, anameina. Uh, May Chukwok, God bless you people. Thank you for coming. And have a wonderful uh, rest of the month. There were.
There were.
My mother.
Hello, hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I have an update. Our honorable Tiniary, Sister Tiniyapo is blessing us with fifteen AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, where are we on the program now?
Honorable, if you have, uh, finished the, uh, vote of thanks, which I hope you finished, you still go ahead and do the closing prayers.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, uh, let's pray. Uh, we thank you all, Lord. We bless your name for today. For bringing us together in this Wery Town Hall Meeting. We thank you for all that we have done today, all the progress that we have recorded and all the support. We pray that, Lord, you will protect our people from evil. You will wake up our people who are in slumber. You will help us to defend our land. You will protect our people, our men on the ground. You will protect our leaders. You will protect the life of Onyendu and our PM. And you will take away saboteurs and evil people within our midst. We glorify your name today, Chukwokikabiama. We thank you as we go back to our respective stations, that your spirit will go with us. We thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name, he says. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good nights.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, I remember blood.
Thank you.
Alright, there were, there were.
There were, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.